Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, I can.
Thank you. Let's try this one more time. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect, thank you. So we called to order the meeting of February first, Planning Commission for City of Cottati.
Normally I would do a roll call right now, but you have administration of oath to appoint a member Hancock.
Yes, that's correct.
It's a little out of order, so I'm just going by what you have on the agenda.
No, I'll go ahead and we'll swear in appointed member Hancock.
I'm here.
Neil, if you'll please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
Aye, Neil Hancock.
Aye, Neil Hancock.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations Neil, and thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations Neil.
Hey, hello.
Nice to have you back on.
Hi, yes.
So our next is the reorganization of the Planning Commission for calendar year 2021. And we'll be picking Chair.
Yeah, this is correct, Chair Moore, and I apologize.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I apologize for not reaching out to chat with you about this process a little earlier, but yeah, it is according to Rule One of the Planning Commission bylaws. We typically would be voting on a Chair and a Vice Chair at the second meeting of January, because that fell on a holiday this year, we are doing that at the first meeting of February.
Sure. So normally I would, I can't remember last year, but we would pick for a Vice Chair first or for Chair first, what would you like Lauren?
I will defer to Noah, but Vice Chair would be fine.
Okay. So is there any nominations for Vice Chair for Planning Commission?
I'd propose Sylvia Lemus for Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, and do we have any discussion?
Is Sylvia prepared to take it on, I guess?
Sylvia, is that okay with you? Is Sylvia on mute?
Nope, she should be able to speak at this time. And once you guys have had time to decide, I'll go ahead and take a roll call vote on the Vice Chair nomination.
Sure, I'm gonna, if Sylvia concurs with us, I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Hey. Sylvia, are you there? Well, why don't we do, well Sylvia's not speaking right now, why don't we do the Chair? And then we'll come back to Vice Chair.
I would propose Brittany for Chair, if she's willing to do it.
And I would second that.
Yes, I'm willing to do it.
Okay. Then I would like to open this up for public comment on the nomination of Brittany Murphy for Chair of Planning Commission.
I see no public comment at this time.
Okay, I'll be closing public comment and bringing it back to Planning Commission. And I just will take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Abstain.
Chair Moore?
Yes.
And we're getting a message in from Commissioner Lemus at this moment. She's unable to speak at this time, we'll try to fix that. Commissioner Murphy, you can have a vote in this, I believe.
Oh, okay, then yes.
As you probably required, we have to have at least three of us, so. All right, great, congratulations Chair Murphy. And so I'll just do Vice Chair. We'll bring that back to, I have a, Neil has nominated Sylvia, and I will second that, and we'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Chair Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes. That's what happens when your, when your recording is down, you get Vice Chair, so. So I am going to be now handing this off to Chair Murphy to run the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome, congratulations.
I apologize in that I wasn't prepared for this, so I'll do my best today. And then prepare a little bit more in advance for the next meeting. But it looks like we'll be moving into roll call.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, present.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Chair Murphy?
Yes.
And I will let you know, and Commissioner Lemus or Vice Chair Lemus will be able to enter the meeting.
Great.
Good, thank you, I appreciate that. Can we move into the approval of the minutes, were there any changes?
No changes from staff, and we do have a quorum.
Okay, wonderful. Then can we move forward with approving the minutes?
I would move it to approve the August the 17th, 2020.
I will second on that.
Okay, and a vote?
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair Murphy?
Yes. Great. Moving along to changes to the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
The, sorry Chair, I think we have to go through each of the minutes individually, I just proposed
Oh, thank you.
The first one, so it's, there's three others, and
Okay.
If there's no changes, I believe one motion could be made to act on all of them if it, one of the commissioners so sees it fit.
We have, I have to abstain from the December 7th, and so does Sylvia, because we were not there.
Can we move forward with giving a motion for August 7th, September 21st, and October 19th meeting minutes?
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes, welcome.
I moved to approve September 21st and October 19th minutes.
I'll second it.
Great, and a vote?
Commissioner Lemus?
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Chair Murphy?
Yes. Okay, and can we have a motion for approval of the December 7th meeting agenda, or sorry, meeting minutes?
I don't believe we have a quorum on those, so I think we'll have to table them until we get a fifth commissioner. Well, actually, they won't be able to vote on them either. And so normally in this situation, we would draw straws to have somebody who can vote. But given our unique format, I think we should go ahead and move forward with action on this. And then I will work with the clerk to address the issue as needed.
Can we, can we, sorry Chair, could we just affirm or say something that we believe they're correct?
Yes, I was a participant of that meeting and reviewed the minutes, and they love to correct me in addition to any feedback that the staff has, and it sounds like we have no changes, so I would be comfortable stating that they are accurate, in my opinion. Noah, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't, just thinking about it, if one of you has watched the video or does watch the video by the next meeting, then you could vote on it.
Has anyone watched the video yet? If not, we will revisit this for the next meeting.
I have not watched the video yet, but I can do that.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
So the December 7th meeting will be, the minutes will be tabled until the next meeting, thank you.
Thank you. Guys are keeping me on my toes for my leading my first official week. And so now we will move into any changes to the agenda.
There are no changes, Chair Murphy.
Thank you. Do we have oral or written communication this evening?
Chair Murphy, nothing further. Chair Murphy, are you still on the line? Noah, can you hear me?
Okay. I don't, I can hear you, this is Sylvia.
I can, I can hear everyone, but I do not hear Chair Murphy.
Okay. Noah, this time would you like Vice Chair Lemus to take over until we get Chair back?
I, I apologize, I seem to have been out of the meeting, but I'm back. So we're off to a rocky start, but I think we'll get better.
It is a little rocky, I just wanna let everybody know that we've been having some internet connectivity issues here tonight too, so we'll keep that in mind.
Okay, we can do this. I think last I had said is, are there oral or written communications for this evening?
Nothing further.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're now moving into matters at hand, which is the Cottage Housing Workshop number two. Can I hand this over to staff to walk us through the presentation?
Yeah, Senior Planner John Paul Harries will be leading this discussion.
Great, thank you so much. John Paul, if you're talking, we, you may be on mute or we can't hear you yet.
John Paul, you're unmuted, but we cannot hear you.
Here we go, I see, I see you went back on mute, maybe you're trying one more time. Noah, I'm still not hearing him on my end, can anyone else hear him?
I did not hear him, I'm about to reach out to let him know we can work on it a different way.
Yeah, I can't hear him either. I have to call in from my phone, so I have my laptop on, but I have my phone where I called in, because I couldn't, my mic wasn't working. Okay, so John Paul, if you can hear us, it may, it may help to also call in on your phone. You'll just wanna make sure then that your computer's muted. And we'll wait and give it a minute or two.
All right, well I'll just start teeing this up a little bit while John Paul works on his connectivity. The Commission will recall, we last had a discussion on cottage housing, the proposed draft ordinance in early December. And that was also a similar workshop format where we were introducing the topic to the community. I wanted to give the Planning Commission, the public, kind of a first round look at what we were contemplating. There's been a lot of research that's gone into the draft ordinance. And this is proposed to give the Commission and City Council, I'm sorry, and public a little bit more information behind the intent and the specifics of the ordinance itself. And allow folks to, another opportunity to provide feedback before we move this through the formal adoption process, which will be an ordinance. We are proposing to amend the code, zoning code. The next time this is brought forward, we will take all the input we received from the Planning Commission and incorporate it in the public and incorporate it into the finalized draft that then is brought forward in an ordinance format. And I'm not sure if any of the Commissioners had a chance to read the article I sent out, but we will attach that to the agenda. But I found that, and I thought it did a good job of kind of identifying that this is a tool that many communities are using or considering using to try to address kind of the, the connection between increased density and keeping with community character. And the idea is to just provide another, another method for folks to get more density, but in a way that can fit into some of our infill single-family home locations, or even, even some of the locations that are maybe on the border between two different zoning districts, but might have a lot of single-family characteristics. But we're seeking to allow a method to densify such projects. And one of the things that, that we wanted to do is provide visual representations and examples. And so the city was able to hire a few different architects, and we just gave them the, the draft ordinance itself and some undeveloped parcels around town, different zoning districts, different parcels. But we asked them to kind of take that ordinance, the draft language, and come up with, with a way that that would be implemented on these various sites. And those concept site plans were attached to the packet for the Commission and public to review and consider. And then we do have one of those architects, who's a local architect, Paul Fritz. He is joining us as an attendee this evening. And we're hoping that he can provide some comments on this concept. And then we also have as an attendee Brian Flahaven, who is an owner of a parcel in town, who he is also seeking to develop and is interested in potentially using the cottage housing concept with his development. And so the draft site plan that he is considering has not been filed yet, formally filed, but has also been attached for the Commission to get an example of, of, a real-life example of a project a developer is considering moving forward, should this be supported and approved.
Thank you Noah, that, that's very helpful, and I do appreciate you sending the link. The article was interesting, as well as some of the photo examples that were provided. Is that, is the link to that article available anywhere for others on the call who, who wouldn't have received it via email? Will it be in our notes or meeting minutes somewhere, so people can refer back to it?
We will, we'll amend the agenda to add it, put it in the, the meeting minutes. That's a great example, and we'll also make sure it's formally attached when we bring the concept forward.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
So Noah, this is, this is Lisa, and I just wanted to let you know that I, I did also find it very interesting. I deal a lot with Keller Court Commons in Petaluma.
So you're very familiar?
Yes, in my other job with recology. And so I love the concept of that area, and I, every time I go in there, it just is one of my happy places. So, and I just wanted to say too, that those places that are on Keller Street Commons are very high-end. So it's a cottage, you know, housing, but very, very expensive cottage housing.
Yeah, that's correct, that's, I think, I'm very appreciative that you're, that you are familiar with that. And the owner actually gave us a tour, and he, he used to work with Ross Chapin, he was a developer himself. And so he was really instrumental in kind of creating these types of ideas, as they, they kind of grew out of the Pacific Northwest. And he has been a huge resource to us, just to bounce things off of and, and provided all of his time for free. And you are correct, his concept is very, very high-end. But it also provides, I think, a good example that there's a lot of different types of these types of projects that could come in. One, at the very high affordability level. But then also, I think, you know, some of the, the ideas around tiny homes and tiny home villages, while this doesn't exactly go there, it's a version of that, to where we could get some affordability by design with just smaller square footages. As we all know, real estate's price per square foot. And so that would give some flexibility for folks to create a variety of price points in their, in their homes.
Can you guys hear me now?
Again.
Yes.
Okay, I don't know what went wrong, I have a new microphone camera that was working fine earlier today, I don't know what happened tonight, and I, I apologize for the disruption. Thank you Noah, for covering for me, I heard the end conversation about Keller Commons. I heard the end conversation about color comments. I didn't hear the beginning, but why don't we just take it from here unless someone else had a, another comment to make?
Any other comments from, um, the Commission before we have JP move forward? Okay, we're looking forward to hearing your presentation.
Okay, thanks. Um, uh, Lauren, can you add the slide please? So what I want to do, I am, because we have two Commissioners that were not, uh, at the meeting, uh, last time as well. It is a workshop, and, um, there might be some people that didn't get a chance to attend the last workshop. So I'm going to fairly quickly kind of go over what we talked about yester- our last meeting in December. Um, just to give some introduction and background to the topic, uh, one more time. And then I'll discuss, uh, some of the changes that we made to the ordinance as it was presented, um, in December, uh, based on comments that were received from the public, from, uh, the developers and architects we've been working with, as well as, um, the Planning Commissioners, um, in December. So, um, this effort is being funded by an SB two planning grant. This was part of a housing package, um, uh, in twenty seventeen, um, which was aimed at addressing the state's housing shortage and high housing costs. We are, they, there was a, a grant, um, notification. We applied and received a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which was the highest amount we could have received. And, um, and we're aiming to accomplish these four, four items with this grant. Uh, the first we've already completed, which was the ADU JADU Code Amendment. Um, this effort now is focusing on cottage housing, and then in the future, we'll be looking at, um, buy right, uh, multi-family housing, and development of objective design guidelines. And that last, uh, that last, um, item is currently underway. Next slide, please. So, um, our primary goals with the cottage housing are listed here, um, in bold. You, they're highlighted. Um, our goal is to promote sustainable development, um, through smaller and more efficient housing, um, as compared to like, single-family, typical, single-family suburban development. Um, our goal is also to, uh, is to diversify the city's housing stock, um, and, and, um, trying to get to affordable homes, more affordable by design, by the fact that they're smaller, but, um, as, um, car, uh, ch- uh, I guess you're not sure anymore. Sorry, um. Commissioner Moore, uh, said that, um, some of these can be real high-end developments. So, um, while our goal is to aim for the, uh, affordable, uh, they, they can be within the range of price ranges. And, um, we want to try to encourage infill development, uh, within our residences, and provide a density bonus. Um, and I'll touch on this a little bit more, but the density bonus is because, um, we're limiting the size of the cottages that could be developed within a cottage housing development. Um, and to make it financially feasible, it does require a, a certain amount of increase in density. Um, uh, the cottage housing requires a functional common open space that fosters a sense of community and openness. And that image on the right there kind of tries to capture some of what that would look like. And we'll look at other images later on in the PowerPoint. Um, it provides private areas around the common area and around the things, uh, around the cot- the units, excuse me. And, um, what that does is it helps to provide a diversity in landscape design, as well as foster a sense of ownership, um, by the, the residents within the community. And our, also our goal is to, uh, to maintain the character of existing residential neighborhoods. Even though we would be upping density, there's a lot of other features of the cottage housing element, uh, ordinance that would reduce impacts associated with an, uh, an increased density and should be consistent with, um, with the, the surrounding neighborhoods. And actually, what you're going to see, I think, when you start looking at how these developments come out, um, is that it's actually very similar to, uh, Katati's historic development patterns. There are a lot of, I wouldn't say a lot, but there are quite few little developments within Katati that would be very close to what you're seeing here in a cottage, uh, with the cottage housing ordinance. So it's not, um, it's not terribly far from where we're at already. Um, but we don't have the tools to do those kind of developments. They were previously done under Planned Unit Developments, uh, which is a planning tool, which allows flexibility, um, in the, from standards, but that is no longer part of our code and hasn't been in a little while. And so, we need some other tools for us to achieve a diversity in housing stock. And this is one of the tools we're looking at. Next slide, please. Um, part of the major goal of this ordinance is, is aiming for what we call the missing middle. Um, and that's highlighted, the type of units that you see highlighted in the top left there, ADUs, cottage housing duplex, fourplex. Um, that's what we're aiming at with this ordinance. And all of those types of units that you see highlighted there, as well as in the picture down to the lower right, uh, would be, you could develop them within a cottage housing complex. So it's not just cottage housing or duplex or accessory dwelling unit. Um, you really can start to combine all of these, uh, into a cottage housing development. And the missing middle, for folks that haven't heard this phrase, are basically, there are people that are typically priced out of, um, single-family dwelling homes, uh, but they also cannot qualify for deed-restricted, uh, affordable housing, because they make too much money. So they, it's the one housing segment that's real hard to meet their, uh, to target housing for them. Um, and so we need alternatives to just straight-up single-family dwellings, as well, multi-family. We're looking for something that falls in the middle there. Um, and smaller homes can be affordable by design, and I've already mentioned, you can get a diversity of different housing types within a cottage housing development. Next slide, please. Uh, just some, uh, characteristics of cottage housing. Um, they tend to be compact dwelling units, ranging in size from about a thousand to sixteen hundred square feet at the, at the maximum. Uh, they're clustered around a common open space. Typically, the separation between the units is reduced compared to, uh, say, a single-family, um, neighborhood. Uh, they, they do contain roof porches, which helps to, which is just one element of a kind of layers of space. So you have the porch, then there's a private open space, which eventually leads to a common open space. So it creates these transitions, um, which actually foster a sense of privacy, even though you're sharing, um, kind of a common area with common amenities. Uh, pa- pedestrian pathways, as well as bicycle pathways throughout the development. Uh, parking tends to be either garaged or peripherally. Uh, it can accommodate ADUs above garages, or, or ADUs, um, distinct from, uh, as a, as a separate unit. I mentioned before, it's typically a density bonus because of the smaller unit size. Um, they tend to foster a strong sense of community with, within, between the neighbors. Um, I've talked about, mentioned the personal space. And also, I think the name cottage tends to have people think of one type of architectural style. That's not the case. You can have multiple, um, you can have many different architectural styles. So it's not only the, the country cottage, excuse me, later. Next slide, please. And I want to highlight that, um, what we're proposing here is consistent with the general plan and advances, um, several policies and actions, which are to encourage clustering of housing, so that larger areas of open space may be permanently preserved. Encourage social interaction between neighbors and new residential developments by providing opportunities for community gathering in common areas, parks, neighborhood centers. Encourage a concentration of neighborhood community and retail amenities within walking distance of residential areas. Um, uh, revise the design of the guidelines to require clustering or other, other measures to preserve a sense of openness in new developments. Um, and provide new opportunities for community gathering and social, social interaction. Next slide, please. Um, here are some of the key elements that are within our housing ordinance. So it would be permitted in pretty much all of the residential districts, uh, except for rural residential. Um, it would require use permit approval and approval of, uh, cottage housing development plan. That's, uh, in accordance with the ordinance, uh, it, it, when, when it's adopted. It does require nine hundred square feet of, uh, open space per cottage unit. Um, that's five hundred square feet of common open space and four hundred square feet of pri- private open space. Um, that applies to cottage units, uh, wouldn't apply to, say, ADUs or JADUs within the development. It, um, requires the clustering of units around the common open space and requires, or encourages seventy-five percent of the total number of units to front along that common space. Um, cottages can be at least seven hundred square feet, but no larger than sixteen hundred square feet. That's the maximum size. It would allow for two times the density, um, that's permissible in the underlying zoning district. It does allow for development of ADUs and JADUs, um, accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwellings. It does require communal amenities, such as, um, a community building or passive or active recreation features. It does require, excuse me, I have a frog in my throat here. Um, does require bicycle and pedestrian pathways, um, throughout the, um, throughout the development, and then that those pathways should be linking to the surrounding neighborhood and downtown area. Requires, um, uh, covered porches. And, um, currently it's requiring, we're asking that um, fifty percent of the energy demand be met with, uh, through solar. Um, as well, there, there's limits on the sizes of garages and carports. And, um, currently, we're in the ordinance that's before you today. It would require fifty percent of the parking spaces to be provided with conduit. Actually, fifty percent of them have to have, um, uh, actually have to have EV chargers, and all of them have to have conduit and infrastructure. So that, that, that statement there and the image is a little wrong. We are getting some comments on that, so we may be looking at reducing that a little bit. Um, it does allow for rentals, um, or subdivision and sales of the individual unit. So, um, you have some flexibility in how you want the development to be owned. Um, and it does allow for flexibility in the design standards, especially to avoid natural or historic resources. Okay, next slide, please. And, um, there, these are just some images to give you an idea of, uh, what we're aiming for in terms of, um, the, the look and feel and of the community. You can hear, you can see that there tends to be low fences that delineate private spaces. Um, but, so it kind of creates these little layers of, of space. The porch dropping down to your private yard that you landscape the way you want to landscape it out to the common area. As well, you could see some of the common amenities, such as garden plots in these cases in two of these images. Uh, next slide. And this is just another image, um, of a development called Greenwood Avenue Cottages. This is up in Washington. And next slide. So, let me touch on some of the changes that, um, that we included in the draft, uh, ordinance. Uh, within your packet is the draft ordinance, and it's done in, um, strikeout and underline, so you can see the changes, uh, that we made. And as I mentioned before, these changes were in pretty much all cases, um, in response to comments that were received from, from various people, including the Planning Commission. So I'll just run through these real quick. Um, we've added the full names of the zoning districts, uh, such as neighborhood, um, very low density or neighborhood low density. Excuse me. Um, before, we were just using abbreviations. We did add, uh, the NU, the Neighborhood Urban District. Uh, before, we didn't include that, but, uh, we did, uh, decide to add that as well. Um, there's a minor change to allow retention of any existing residential structure, whereas before, it seemed to imply only a single-family dwelling could be preserved on a site, um, that was existing, and we don't think that's the case. You can preserve any residential structure. Um, clarified that the common open space should be centrally located, and cottage units should, uh, abut the primary common space. Clarified that private open space should provide for a transition between the common open space and the residential unit. So, I think, we also looked at, uh, uh, parking areas and roadways. Before, we had prohibited their placement within the side and rear setback. Um, and I think that was causing, um, it was, it was too prohibitive. And so, they, we amended it to allow it within there, provided you could maintain five-foot landscape buffers, uh, between any kind of roadway or parking area and the, uh, property line. Uh, clarified that bicycle and pedestrian pathways do not count in the land coverage calculation. Uh, we did, uh, change it to require the use of permeable asphalt and concrete. And are getting some comments on that as well, that that could be too costly. Um, clarified that bicycle and pedestrian pathways should provide for connectivity to the downtown, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods. We increased, um, maximum cottage size by one hundred square feet, from fifteen hundred square feet to a maximum of sixteen hundred square feet. Um, we have, we, uh, eliminated the prohibition on converting vaulted spaces. This would affect our future projects, um, or future modifications to an already-built project. Provided that, um, you know, the size of the unit isn't changing, you could do something like that. Um, we did increase the porch size. We got, received some comments that the porch at six feet of depth was too small, and that it should be eight feet of depth, which is consistent with our code today for normal housing. Um, we changed the solar requirement. Before, it said fifty solar panels on fifty percent of the units. Now, we're looking at solar requirement to meet fifty percent of the anticipated electrical demand of the, um, of the residential units. Um, removed the limitation on the size of the community building. Previously, it was twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, now, it's, it would be whatever, uh, would work in that development. It does, um, allow for greater amounts of, uh, consolidated parking. This is kind of in a comment about, um, looking at the Frog Song Development, where, um, they consolidated their parking on down to one side of the, of the property, which allowed them to have more open space around the units. And, um, we didn't want to discourage that kind of development, um, pattern. Um, the limits on garage and carport sizes now specifically exclude designated storage areas and bicycle parking areas. Uh, there was a concern that if we limited the size, um, that people wouldn't use them for parking, and they would use them for storage and biking. So we want to make sure that, um, they can develop them with designated areas for these type of, uh, needs. Um, limiting the roadway width to the minimum necessary to accommodate emergency vehicle access. There are some questions about what, how wide can the roads be? And we don't want big wide And we don't want big wide avenues in these developments. So it really should be the minimum necessary to accommodate emergency vehicles. Right now we're looking, we're suggesting that only, when you're looking at a roadway that is only intended for emergency vehicles, there are these alternative surface materials that are permeable as well as support vegetation. So in working with the fire department, those type of things can be done. And I think Commissioner Hancock referred to it as dual use and thought it was a good idea, so we added that in there. As well, we've added a process for post approval modifications and additions. And next slide, please. And then the following are just some photos. These are kind of, we're working with different architects, just test site plans where we gave them the ordinance and asked if they would, you know, see how it worked and provide us some comments. And I'm seeing that at least two of them are on the line today that might be able to provide some feedback. So this is one site, this is at 188 Myrtle Avenue. This is the way the site looks today. If you will go to the next slide, please, Laura. And this is one, one idea of how it could work. I'm not going to belabor these too much, they're within your packet as well in the handout that was emailed to you and will be posted. And we can always go back to these if you want to discuss certain elements of them. Next slide, please. Same property, but with a different concept. Your, the parking is more consolidated and you would walk into the units, but tends to create more green common area. Next slide, please. This is a property at 8864 Old Redwood Highway, right there at the corner of Eucalyptus and Old Red. That's the property there. Next slide. And here's a concept of how it might look there. Again, none of these have been through a formal review process. They're just some, these are based actually on the old ordinance or the old draft and in response to what we're seeing here and response comments for making changes, but these are just some ideas of how it might look. Next slide. And this is a property right up at, near the top of Cypress Avenue, 8844. Next slide. And here is a concept of how that property might be developed with a cottage housing ordinance. And we are going to have a couple more of these as we bring it forward for, hopefully for adoption, the next time we bring this item forward. We'll have, we'll have a couple more examples. And next slide. And this is a property that we're currently working with a developer on who's been patient, waiting for us to work through this cottage housing ordinance. Currently we, we do have an application for 21 single family homes, which would look very much like the homes that you see that are long-haulier. But they're holding out to see if this cottage housing ordinance would provide a better product for them. And next slide. And this is the concept that they're considering there. Much of it is very much like what's in this ordinance. There's some, this is an older image, so it would have to be amended to be consistent. But, but it's definitely part of the groundwork for where this ordinance was developed from. Next slide. So I've already started to get a little bit of feedback on the amended ordinance and I'll just run through some of these items real quick. You may find that you agree or disagree with some of these things and your comments would be helpful. So the ordinance does have some vague terms such as where feasible and endeavor. The comment was to minimize the use of those vague terms, especially with respect to like where feasible cluster the housing or where feasible use permeable asphalt concrete. So we will probably work to make that more clear or more affirmative that that's what we want, like using the words shall or something. Clarify the building separation requirements. It does say that they should be eight feet. Well, it should just say at least eight feet and not prescriptive at eight feet. And also talk about how the second story separation maybe doesn't, doesn't have to be farther away than the first story, the kind of the way it's written now, it would require that. Clarify the common space requirements regarding the percentage of units that would abut it as well as the number of allowable areas within a kind of a cluster. In some areas of the ordinance, I use one set of words and then use a different set of words to say the same thing, which could lead to confusion. So just use some consistent wording where, where we can. Clarify building orientation requirements such as how should a building orient itself towards the road or towards the open space when there's, when they could have the opportunity to do both. There is a conflict in the ordinance with respect to allowing public access into the development and that wasn't the intention, that they would be required to allow public access, so we'll be adjusting that. Define the parking requirements for JADUs. Allow the setbacks to be used in meeting open space requirements, so we'll have to look at how that might happen. Clarify the on-street parking provisions such as where is the acceptable locations for that and what are the size requirements? And reduce the amount of the required EV charging stations down from 50%. And next slide. Okay, and so just thank you to the folks I've listed here for helping us out. They've been just absolutely critical in making this ordinance a workable ordinance and really grateful for their, for their assistance. And with that, I'll close. I apologize for the problem in the beginning as well as me trying to jump into it after having that chaos. Let them open any questions and comments and I'll leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you, John Paul. That was very informative and please don't worry about the technical issues in the beginning. We're all having them this evening, so we're happy to be patient. I'm going to open it up to questions and comments from the commissioners. So why don't we start with Commissioner Hancock?
Yes, hello, thank you. John, great, John Paul, great, great presentation and some of the discussion that's happened earlier. I wonder if, just drilling down on an area that I have been asking questions about, I think the intention for vehicles and vehicular access is some form of low-speed vehicles or vehicular access to, to units or on the EVA side. And I'm just wondering if there is a possibility of some flexible language that reflects that, that this isn't about having a public, possibly, you know, not really having public through a community, but is there other types of really vehicular supporting surfaces which are permeable? So not to call them permeable concrete or permeable asphalt, which brings up a certain sort of thing, sort of certain view, but is, is there a way of defining more what the, what the, what the functional requirements are that it support access for low-speed vehicles and of course, you know, a weightier EVAs? So that's just, it's just a general question about, you know, that common space that we get to see that is so dominated by blacktop pervious. Is there another way of phrasing that so that there could be lower cost versions of it or more flexibility?
I, I understand what you're saying and I'll, I'll look at that. One of the things that we did in the ordinance, and I don't know if you caught it, is we require in areas like parking areas, let me find the actual language. When it comes to roadways, I think you'll find that you're going to need either a permeable asphalt or a permeable concrete, because otherwise you will run into compaction issues. And I, and I, I'm trying to think of what alternative products there are, but I understand what you're saying and I think I can look at it and see what areas might open themselves up for that type of development.
Well, just because it's the, right, it's the function that's required of supporting vehicles. And so, so one example is a lattice concrete work that can be installed in sections and then things growing through it. That's one thing that I've seen and I've used that's just available from down the road, but I mean, it's the function that's really needed. I, I'm just concerned that there may be some requirement in here somewhere that there is a road, a high-value road built with requirements for storm ditches and, you know, drainage and things, all the things that we seem to have come to, to require, but they actually are doing more damage in many ways. They're over-engineered is what I'm sort of suggesting and I, I don't know, I mean, if the, if a builder or owner is on here who's got some ideas and want to say, you know, what they think about it later, I'd be really interested. But anyway, that's just my point there at this point. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, no, we can explore that as well. But if there are anybody that has comments on that, I'd certainly like to hear that.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Hancock. Commissioner Moore?
Hi, I had a couple things about the EV units being decreased. I'm not really in favor of that with the reports that we're having right now with a lot of the carmakers that are going to all-electric. I think that's just going to be something of the future. I'm not really in favor of decreasing the solar or the mandate that we have EV charges, chargers out there. One of the things about the open space of being accessible to the public, I've been involved with quite a few projects in Katati over the years and one of them sticks in my mind that they were going to have all access to the community and then as soon as they built it and realized that that's not what they wanted, they put up gates. So provision that they, if that's required when you're building the project, that's required after the project is built. Another thing that I saw in this was the open space. So we've done quite a few projects in Katati where there is open space in the middle, there's either a playground or, or some kind of open space park or area. And I'm just curious, I know on Ryan Lane, there's an HOA down at the end of Ryan Lane that actually has a pool. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there that it can be more creative than just a building. So if, if people wanted to do something like that, is that an option to do and think outside the box a little bit in open space? Other than that, I like the design. We've, you know, I've done a lot of PUDs in the past with Katati and I, I think for the most part they've all turned out really well and functioned very well. I lived in an apartment building in Katati for a long time on 711 Marshway that has a lot of open space, so I can appreciate that as a young family living there. Other than that, I didn't really have any other comments other than I like the idea that we have a limit on the size of the housing, that it only needs to be 1,600 square feet. So those are my comments. Thank you, Chair Murphy.
Thank you. Is there any feedback from staff on any of Commissioner Moore's comments? Specifically, I heard a question in there about flexibility around communal buildings or open space, kind of thinking outside the box.
I would just say, I heard all the comments, it should be open space. Absolutely. We're not dictating that they have a communal building at all. They can have any kind of amenities they want in that common open space. Pool is a, is a perfect example or a playground or, or whatever the development wants to include in its, in its common space would be, would be absolutely fine. And they don't have to have a common building at all. So, and then with respect to the open space being open, I, I, I hear what you're saying and I completely agree. If we're looking at a large development that does have a public aspect to it, then absolutely we want that to be open. Right now, within the ordinance, the way it's written, it's confusing where at one point it seems to dictate that you must have public access and then, and then another case it doesn't. Our intention is not to force required public access, because that, that can present its own problems. But as we go through a development review process, if that does become an element of the project like what we saw at, like for example, Katati Village or even what we just did over at Village Walk, well, then that's a different situation. And, and I agree, we want to make sure that those type of public spaces remain in perpetuity. So other than that, unless I, I seem, unless I misspoke about what Commissioner Moore was asking, I think I've got it.
Thank you. Okay, and Vice Chair Lemus? Vice Chair Lemus, do you have any comments or questions? Okay, I think we may, we may still be having some audio issues there. And.
Chair, I've got another question I could ask.
Can you hear me?
Oh, there's Sylvia.
I can hear you. Oh, no, sorry. No, I was, I, yeah, I was just going to share that I missed a December meeting, the part one of the cottage housing. And so I thought it was a lot of really good information and I think that the concept that focused on the missing middle is really good. And I agree with a lot of the other comments that other people shared. I didn't have any additional questions. I was a little concerned about parking, because if it's infill projects, depending on the access and, and what's around it, I just was a little concerned about parking. But it did say at least one, I think, per ADU or, or per one to two, I think, per unit. So that was the only concern that I had was parking in the area. Those are my comments.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hancock, I think you had a follow-up, correct?
Yes, I did. Thank you very much, Chair. So I just got a question on the EV, on the chargers concept, and I, I'm just wondering, I think there's, there's three parts to a charger. There's, one is the conduiting that is underground to a particular build, a particular location. And then there's the other part is the wiring, the wiring that is sufficient usually to support the 220 volts to be able to deliver the power. So it's a two-phase usually that comes through. And the third item, the third part of that is often a charger that plugs in. So really my question to staff is perhaps is there a way to differentiate one requiring conduits, which I think everybody really supports when the ground is up, it's very easy to put in conduits. But the second part is, is to put in a, to all units, to all vehicle garages and places, perhaps a 220 point. and places, perhaps a 220 point where it's pre-wired. And so any owner then that decides to plug in a charger would be very easy. And I, and I did this when I put in my solar panels. I just asked the solar installer, could they put in an extra point? That was really a, an electric dryer type point. I was just trying to find out the name of it, but it was very easy. And then when I actually got an electric vehicle and applied for Sonoma Clean Power rebate on it, I got the unit and I just plugged it straight in and there was no cost to myself. So, so the question really is, is about that to staff, is about that 220 volts to all the potential places rather than an EV station?
So I think what you're hearing, what I'm hearing is that you would like us to allow for flexibility, that it be either a charging station or a 220, or just, so some means of charging a vehicle? Am I hearing that correctly?
Well, based on the feedback that you actually said earlier that people are pushing back on having an EV charging station, which is, I mean, I kind of agree with that. You know, it's, the charging stations can be free through a rebate scheme currently at the moment. So the issue isn't really the charging stations. It's having an electric, having the conduit there that can support the charging station. And I just wonder if, for any potential applicants, if they would see that process of putting in a sufficiently a 220 volt point within a closed garage or a closed parking structure or near one, to be the same issue?
Well, I can, I can ask around and perhaps we'll get some feedback later.
Okay. Right, okay. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I, I wanted to again thank John Paul for the presentation, both at this meeting and our last meeting. I found it really valuable to walk through this in such detail. I appreciate that we're doing it in, in two sessions. It's allowed me time and I'm sure others who have been involved to digest the idea of this, especially, you know, that some of the really important questions and recommendations that we brought up last time and how we can add to that. So thank you for incorporating those and talking us through it this week. A couple of things that I'll add to many of the comments that were made, I agree with completely. I did have some questions or clarifications around the solar. So when we said that with the solar requirement to provide 50% of the anticipated electric demand, that that was a change since the last workshop. John Paul, could you just clarify again what the difference was from the last workshop to this workshop? And, and confirm that that would be less solar that we would require?
So at the last, at the last, the last ordinance required 50% of the units of the, of the cottage units. So just a number to have solar panels. It didn't really describe, you know, what they should try to achieve with those solar panels or how many solar panels it should be. So it just said, you know, if you have 24 units, well, 12 need to have solar panels. This way, this approach was more getting at what, what the real goal of putting the solar panels is, which is reduce your electrical demand by, by using solar panels, solar panels or photovoltaic panels. So before it was 50% of the units should have panels. Now it says, now you have to have sufficient panels to meet 50% of your demand. I suspect, and a little bit of research I was doing on it, that that would actually lead to more solar panels, not less.
Okay, that, yeah, that, the, the way it was explained, I had a feeling that maybe we were just looking at it in a different way. And I'm hopeful that that does mean we would have more solar rather than less. I, I certainly appreciate us looking at kind of what the impacts are and how we can reduce those. I, I, I did have some concerns or questions on the parking. I just, in a lot of the examples that were shown, it looked like the parking was fairly well spread apart and that it wasn't all kind of set in one area, which I thought was a pleasant layout and kind of kept parking closer to the homes for easier and safer access. But I know that that was a change that we made from the last workshop. So is that just providing more flexibility? Or is that actually encouraging that parking spots be in one communal area versus spread out around the development?
The intent is to provide more flexibility. It was, when someone brought up, I can't remember who it was, but they brought up the parking at Frog Song. And it made me realize that the way our ordinance was written, it wouldn't allow for that type of parking arrangement. And, and I, and I, and I agree with you, the way I would want it, the community I would want to be in, I'd want to be closer to my parking. But I wouldn't also want to at the same time exclude something where you have the ability to create a nice community, but if you're having to put cars all over it and the roads for it to get to every corner of the community. I didn't want to for, but my, my concern was, is the way we have the ordinance structured is that it was forcing people, it would force people to build more roadways than they may want to. So the intent was to provide for more flexibility. And if they wanted to consolidate parking to one part of the parcel, that they would have the ability to do that. Again, all this would go through a design review process where we could really get into the detail on a particular project. But the intent was to provide for flexibility.
Thank you. That, it's, it's helpful to hear your thought process there because I know you're, you're visualizing and considering things that we might not. The, the last two items I had questions or comments on is, I believe in the PowerPoint, there was the third bullet down, it said, allow for the retention of any existing residential structure. And I apologize if I didn't capture what you said here. But is the thought here that if there were some sort of structure already there that we want, that would be renovated or just tried to tie in somehow to, to the development? Is that the thought to provide that sort of opportunity?
That's exactly what it is. So if there is a home or maybe a, you know, a duplex or a multiplex structure that could be converted and retained, and that's what the owner wanted to do, this would allow them the ability to do that. In talking to Noah, our concern was, well, what if someone wants to retain a structure and we're, we're not opposed to it, but it wouldn't meet the standard? So this gives them the ability to say, okay, we understand that you might have a structure and it might be non-conforming with the ordinance. But if you retain it and work it into the, work it into the project, the development, that would be okay. You know, we don't want to force people to tear down housing that they may not want to. As well, they might be able to do some really interesting conversions with some of that. So our idea was to leave the door open to that and to not limit it only to single-family dwellings that might be converted, that someone might want to convert another structure as well.
Okay, thank you. And my last comment, and I think this is probably something that we would discuss more once a design is brought to the commission. But in many of the photos that were provided or that I've looked at separately, I've noticed that vegetation does seem to play a key role in kind of the, the look and feel and user friendliness of the area, just having very nice walking spaces, gardens, really nice vegetation. And so I would emphasize that I, I think that that's something we should really encourage when we're looking at actual proposals for development. With that, I will just ask one more time, do any of the commissioners have additional questions or comments before we move into public comment?
Brittany, I have one, just, this is Lisa, just on the solar, what, kind of piggybacking on what you were saying about 50%. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. So if you had a common building and you wanted to put solar on that and tie it into, say like what we did in City Hall, where we put the solar on an existing building, but it actually, you know, the electricity runs the community room and the police department. Is that something, is that, I'm, I'm just running this through my head. Is that something that, why the 50% of all of the electrical? JP?
So the way I intended to structure it is that you would, yeah, that you would not be looking at each individual unit, but rather asking, what is the electrical demand of the residential units? There might be some other electrical that may not be met. But of the residential units as a whole, for the entire development, what is the anticipated electrical demand? And then, and then apply the 50% to the development as a whole. So, so you're not looking at each individual building and requiring it to meet 50%, but rather the entire development. And then how they choose to meet that is really up to the developer and how they decide they want to be able to do that. Does that, did that answer your question?
It does. And I just wanted to make one comment. You were on when I was talking about this, but I do a lot of work for Keller Street Commons. And just piggybacking like you said on what Brittany said, they have an old house right before you get into the development that was refurbished.
Right, they worked it in, yeah.
Yeah, it's actually beautiful. It's one of my favorite places in Petaluma. And I think it, just that existing house and then going down into the property just kind of makes it. So if anybody actually wants to see that in Petaluma, it's a really great example of what we're looking at for our cottage housing ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's a perfect example.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Brian, please, then go ahead.
Sorry. I, I think I got it now. Am I here?
We can hear you Brian.
All right, thanks guys. I just, I just wanted to comment and frankly, just acknowledge that JP and Noah have spent a lot of time on this and I think have really got a great length and have really tried to work on, on a plan that's, you know, potentially effective in developing housing and, and, and the type of housing that is desperately needed, which includes the project that we're hopefully gonna work on there and put together at 8841 Old Redwood Highway. And it's an exciting concept, I think a good, good fit for the city of Catati. And I appreciate you guys' time and input. It's, it's really helpful and beneficial. So thank you.
Thank you Brian. Lauren, do we have any other public comment?
Paul Fritz, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Hey Larry?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. So hi, my name's Paul Fritz. I, I'm one of the architects that worked on some of those sites. And I just wanted to make a couple of additional comments. There's been a lot of discussion about the photovoltaic requirements. And with the current California Building Code, pretty much all single-family homes require photovoltaics. So, you know, this, this conversation of it's 50% or whatever, what is 50% of what? Pretty much all, unless there's some kind of extenuating circumstances from a, like a site standpoint of it's too shady or whatever, most single-family homes, like these kinds of developments, will be required to have photovoltaics on every single house. So you may not even need to include something, that kind of language in the ordinance, just because the, the building code will really dictate that. And, and the building code at this point is dictating kind of a higher percentage than you're even contemplating in the, in the ordinance. So you may just want to eliminate that. I was also, one of the, you know, comments I gave to JP was the, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, kind of against some of this vague language. So I'd really encourage that to be cleaned up. You know, it's, it's hard to, to design to something to the extent feasible, you know? So that kind of language where it can be a much more concrete requirement just makes these kinds of ordinances and codes easier to comply with, to be quite honest. Because you could, you could think you've designed something to the extent feasible and someone could say, have a different opinion about that, you know? It's, it's, so as long as you, as much as you can take these kind of opinion kind of things away, the easier it will be for a potential developer to comply with the ordinance and, and get you a product that you're looking for. And then, you know, there's been a lot of discussion tonight about the, the electric charging station requirement. You know, obviously there is a lot of cost in that. And I, I'm largely in favor of electric vehicles. And I think, you know, requiring more charging stations is a good thing. It does, it does obviously become a cost issue, you know? It will increase the cost, overall cost of the project to put in, you know, 50% or 100% or whatever the, the number is. And then there was a comment about maybe it's just the conduit and the wiring. It, it can impact the overall electrical load of the project. So it's a little bit hard to say, well, just put the conduit in at the beginning, then you can add the, you know, stations as you go. You know, if you have a large development of, you know, 40 or 50 units and you have all these parking spaces, you could have quite a number of parking spaces. That could require additional transformers and, you know, it could, it could kind of cascade and be difficult to implement down the road. So I don't know exactly what the answer to that is, but just something I think it needs to be carefully considered that you don't want to say, yeah, you can do it down the road, but then down the road it ends up being a fairly large. I mean, it's one thing to put in, you know, one for your house. It's another thing to put in, you know, 40 or 50, for 40 or 50 parking spaces for a, a multi-unit kind of situation. And it's also a little bit challenging, depending on the actual design. You know, there's been some conversations about the parking location. You know, if the parking is kind of a more separated parking situation, figuring out like where does that power come from? You know, if, if it's supposed to be for, you're, if you're charging your car, you want that power to be coming from your house. But to get the wiring from your house to your parking spot, if it's not like a garage that's adjacent to your house, could also be kind of challenging. So then does it become that just the community is paying for all the electrical vehicle charging? And everyone gets assessed something, you know, it just, it could be complications there. And again, I don't know exactly what the answer is, it's just something to be aware of as the ordinance develops and you don't want to kind of back yourself into some kind of hole with that. And I think that's all kind of my general comments. I think, you know, JP covered a lot of the other comments I had in his presentation. But I'm happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any questions about, you know, what the sites I did, I laid out or anything else that I saw as I was going through the draft ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you Paul. Lauren, do we have any additional public comment?
That will end public comment.
Okay, we will close public comment and turn it back over to the commission for follow-up questions or comments. So we'll start with Commissioner Hancock.
Yes, hello. I appreciate Paul Fritz's comments on loading. And I'm an electrical engineer and I've actually been following what's happened at Frog Song. And he is absolutely right. And yet we, so as the loading increases and particularly electric vehicle with a fast charge is a significant load. If you have to deliver eight 20 kilowatt, eight or 20 kilowatt hours worth of, of load. So this is a crux of a vision for more electric vehicles. And I'm not going to say, I mean, I think somehow we have to think it out that the, that there may be, again, in a statistical sense, some sort of loading that works out for owners as they acquire electric vehicles. There are the charge point places where you can actually essentially add a charge point. Um, there are the charge point places where you can actually essentially add a charge point system and then pay for it as you're doing it. But if we have a, a, a vision um, for more electric vehicles, this is the last mile, so to speak, or the last ten feet, last twenty feet of getting the wiring. Getting the, the um, the jewels of electricity, the coulums into the car, into the vehicle. So I think, I think that's a critical area to um, to talk it over with X, with, you know, people are thinking of the design. But I would um, maybe, maybe it should come up with some fifty percent of, of locations, some, some figure. Um, that um, um, households can achieve a certain number of, of electric vehicles before they're going to have to go through a process of upgrading the local transformer. Which, which is what Frog Song had to do. Frog Song made a commitment to um, having a number of households there. And they had to get a grant. And um, so anybody who knows some contacts at Frog Song, I'm sure they'll be happy to talk about it. Um, otherwise, I think it's a, a sort of, it's a good process. I, I really appreciate that um, staff are reaching out to get input and um, look forward to the way that it's going to move along.
Thank you. Um, we'll move on to Commissioner Moore.
Yes, I, I don't have any um, other questions other than um, I can appreciate the time that it takes to do these ordinances. And I appreciate staff for, for doing all their hard work and due diligence, especially with going out and seeing other um, properties. Um, no, I, I think it's, I think it's a good starting point. I um, I, I, yeah, I don't really have any other, any questions or.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Moore. Um, Chair Lemus? Or sorry?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I don't have any additional questions. I think it's also um, a good plan, you know, thank staff and all the others for their input, um, very good information. And I think it's a good plan, no other questions, thank you.
Sorry about that, I was on mute. Um, I just wanted to reiterate that I, I really appreciate again, the opportunity to walk through this in such detail over two workshops. I hope everyone found it valuable. Um, uh, it, it's, it's really nice to see all of the time and thoughtfulness that goes into making sure that when we do have an opportunity to review. A plan or future development that um, it's, it's aligned with, with um, the feedback that's taken place to go into the changes in this ordinance. So thank you very much. Um, I believe because this is a workshop, we don't need to make a decision or motion on anything. Uh, Noah, can you confirm that's the case?
That is correct, Chair Murphy.
Okay, so in that case, again, thank you for um, walking us through this. And um, we will move forward to the reports by staff.
I just want to say thank you to Senior Planner Jean-Paul Harries and uh, all the architecture teams that helped uh, support us. And uh, Mr. Flahaven for his uh, incredible patience. He's been, I think, engaged with the community, um, frankly, longer than I have. With, with his concept for developing in Gattati and uh, just has been very patient in working with us through all our various challenges. And I really appreciate all the uh, input from the commission. I think next time you see it, it will be in a formalized ordinance uh, design. And we'll be asking commissioners and the public. Like to, uh, review a formal action and get a recommendation up to the city council on this, that's very exciting. Uh, welcome, new commission. We, we still have one open seat, uh, and I know that applications are available. So if you are aware of anybody who's interested in making a very significant volunteer commitment. Um, please encourage them to file an application. I'm excited to get a, a full commission seated, uh, because we do have a lot of work to do. And obviously, we're going to be utilizing this unique format um, for the foreseeable future at least. And along those lines. You, we like to mirror the city council, we are a body that is under the city council, we tend to mirror their direction. And this council is meeting via Zoom on camera. And so I just letting the commissioners know to be prepared for that change. Um, I wasn't sure what we were going to do tonight because we hadn't talked about it. So I appreciate the, the uh, clerk giving us all fair warning and allowing us one more meeting, uh, where we don't necessarily have to have our hair combed. But next meeting, we should be at least prepared for that, so just letting you know. Uh, that will likely go to a video for future meetings. Um, as many of you are aware, we've been working on a visual preference survey. So that's kind of uh, showing people photographs of different development types and asking to get their opinions on them. And this is uh, kind of to help support the objective design guidelines that are also underway. And I just thank you to everyone who took that survey and for helping us get the word out. We got over seventy responses, uh, and that was only over, I think, less than six week period. So really appreciate the community stepping up and, and jumping in to participate. And also for staff of putting that together, we have a, a part-time uh, senior planner Joel Galbraith, uh, who's working on that. And uh, he will be presenting that uh, at our next meeting on March first. So commissioners just know that we are going to cancel the second meeting in February. It falls also on a holiday, President's Day, but we will be hosting a meeting on March first. Um, to talk about. The objective design guidelines, and so just be prepared to um, hear the, the results of the survey and, and see a first draft of those guidelines. And that will be at a workshop format as well. Uh, and in the meantime, we'll also be holding a joint meeting with the city council on February twenty-third. This starts at five o'clock and this is, um, many of you will recall when I first came on board, we, we chatted and, and met and, and talked about doing kind of a land use one-on-one. Kind of presentation. And so the goal of that will be just to have staff walk you through kind of some of the foundation and, and legal uh, elements behind a lot of the decisions you make. Just to make sure everybody uh, is kind of coming from the same point of reference as we um, discuss some of the hierarchy of, you know, the general plan and the zoning code. And um, kind of the different abilities of the city to require things based on different types of entitlements that are being requested. We're also going to talk about CEQA and get fairly uh, in-depth with some of the CEQA discussions. So just to provide the commission and the council with the solid foundation and CEQA expertise. And then, and then lastly, we're going to a, amend um, or add to the Housing One-on-One or Land Use One-on-One to add a discussion on housing. Uh, as many of you have heard me say, you know, housing and planning are kind of merging in a lot of ways. And so um, for many of us planners, it's kind of a whole new world. And a, a lot of folks who have been involved in, in land use decisions um, are now being asked to make land use decisions in, through the lens of housing. And so with a lot of new legal requirements. And so we just wanted to similarly add a foundation of, of expertise and knowledge to the commission and the council regarding. Uh, the fast-paced changes um, with regards to housing regulations. And so just look forward to that. Um, we will do our best to not PowerPoint you to death, but I don't know if we'll succeed or not. Uh, there will be quite a bit of information presented, it will be kind of a, you know, drinking from a fire hose. But if there's specific topics anyone would like addressed, please send me an email or give me a call and we could chat about it. Otherwise, uh, look forward to a kind of fast-paced presentation for myself, Senior Planner Harries and Senior Planner Galbraith. Um, and then we'll definitely save a, a large chunk of the meeting time for questions and answers. But just wanted to kind of give everybody a heads up. Um, other than those future meetings, we are, you know, looking to, we've closed out the twenty-twenty year. We're putting together our housing report, uh, that's due to the state. And uh, we will be presenting that to the planning commission of the city council before submitting it to the state, which is due on April first. So just look for that at a future meeting as well. And that concludes my presentation. Happy answering questions.
Thank you, Noah, and thank you to your team for providing those updates. Um, do we have any questions from the commissioners for Noah before we move into the next agenda item?
None for me.
None for me.
Me either, just happy new year, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move into the next item, which is reports by commission. Um, I'll, I'll start um, with Commissioner Hancock, do you have any reports?
Yes, I could report that I've been part of a number of wildfire resiliency forums. So the context really is the, um, you know, what we've been going through for the last couple of years. And just how, what the experts out there, um, and the importance of, um, at a, um, a regional scale, at the county scale or even larger. Um, importance of land use discussions about where um, there's good places for housing. And maybe where there is um, not so good places. So in particular, there was a woman, a researcher called Alexandra Siffert, who spent ten years studying um, why structures are destroyed. And what the trend is across the, the whole of the Western US with those. So it was very interesting. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Hancock, that sounds very interesting. Um, Commissioner Moore, do you have any updates for or reports for us?
I don't have any updates, um, other than I am thankful, Brittany, that you took on the chair position. And um, Vice Chair Lemus, I know you, you now have the moniker of Vice Chair Lemus, I don't know if you know that. But um, I appreciate that you both took on those leadership roles. Thank you.
Thank you, we're lucky to have the opportunity to do it. Um, Vice Chair Lemus, do you have any reports for us?
Uh, yes, I do, and I want to say thank you also for the nomination and I do accept the vice chair. I'm sorry, I was having communication problems with my phone and just login. Um, but I do have a report. Um, I, in my new role, last year I took on a communications role at the county. So we just issued a press release about vaccinations for those seventy-five plus. I know there's been a lot of confusion about that. Um, but the press release now has, for anyone that, anyone knows that seventy-five percent older, it has a press release with links of where they can register to get the vaccine. And we're hoping to get to other groups later, it's just there's a supply and demand issue, you know, uh, as you know. So just wanted to kind of pass on that information. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Vice Chair Lemus. I'm sorry, did I miss where, where we could find the press release?
Um, it was just released by the county, um, I can send it to Noah to, to forward, I can forward it right now. Um, Noah and Carrie, and then, or Lauren, and have them forward it to everybody.
Thank you for that information. And um, I just want to say happy new year. I, I don't have anything official to report except to say, thank you for allowing me to chair the commission. Um, it, it's so nice to be a part of um, of the commission and to have an opportunity to learn and review and provide feedback on these important decisions. So um, with that, we will move into the final item, which is items received after the agenda was posted. Do we have additional items that were received after the agenda was posted?
Um, just that article that I sent out is what I'm aware of.
And Chair Murphy, I will go ahead and attach the PowerPoint presentation to the meeting portal. Other than that, nothing further.
Okay, wonderful, so two items that we will be adding um, post-agenda. And um, with that, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. And I hope everyone has a wonderful evening.
Well, thank you very much, um.
Thank you, have a good night.
Happy new year to everybody.
Happy new year.
Good night.